Alrighty, and I will call the meeting to order and we will have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Thank you. Alright, now, public comment?
I know there's no public comments.
No public comments. Are there any topics that anyone would like to add to the agenda? Any additions or topics under either old or new business that anyone has questions or topics you'd like me to bring forward when we get there?
Well, I have a question. It says February 7th. Is that because somebody couldn't do the second week? Because that's the first week of February.
Yeah, I looked at that everything. Yeah, it's it. I do have February 7th. It may have been Lucy, are you on vacation? Someone was on vacation.
No, I'm not sure.
Maybe the 14th. Oh, well, I actually, I'm busy on the 14th. That may have been me.
Oh, okay.
That may have been me. Sorry. And I do have a conflict when we get way into the year somewhere that I'll just need some help. That may have been me. I had something on the 14th. Are you okay for the 7th?
Is the 7th gonna be still a Zoom then?
Let's talk about that. Yes, the Zoom?
It's as a Zoom right now.
So just stick with the normal schedule and just have this one. Okay, does that work for everyone?
Yep.
Okay. Alrighty. Any other topics that you would like added to the agenda? Alrighty, that was just something I told myself I'd like to give people an opportunity to add to the agenda if need be. Then I see reappointment of Dr. Kunkel as our medical director. Is that something, Lucy, we vote on?
Yeah.
Did someone bring forward a motion?
Correct.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion for the Dr. Kunkel. Are you sure you want this?
Oh, definitely.
You're not tired of us yet?
No.
Alrighty, so I will entertain a motion to for the reappointment of Dr. Kunkel as medical director.
I'll make a motion.
Allison made the motion and a second.
I'll second it.
And we have Karen and Glenn, and all those in favor say aye. Yay. Aye. So thank you, Dr. Kunkel. You are invaluable and you are reappointed. And we appreciate, we appreciate what you do for us in the town. And and Glenn, you as well have been a wonderful colleague to be working on the committee. We're so thrilled to have you as well. So that's super. Review of minutes of the December 13th meeting. Thank you, Taylor, for sending them out. I had, I somehow lost mine in the sea of my emails, so thank you for sending them to me again. And thank you, and give everyone a chance to take another look at them. To see if there's any corrections. And once you've had an opportunity, I'll entertain a motion for those to be accepted as written.
I'll make a motion to accept the December 13th meeting minutes.
Thank you, Allison, as written, and a second.
I'll second it.
Deb and all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Very good. And now we'll have a review of the December Health Department Activity Report.
So December was a pretty slow month.
Wow, it looks like it didn't look. I mean, it looked like you were still pretty busy.
It looks like there's a lot going on, you know, the usual stuff, but nothing crazy. We had a commissioner of health meeting with, you know, our our state commissioner, just to review with all the directors of health to just go over any new business, any new topics. That was via Zoom, so that was a pretty short meeting. Nothing really new that's on the radar to speak of. We also had a meeting to discuss our immunization funding. I think I mentioned in our last meeting, just we're looking to maybe pool all of our funding for the media campaign together in Region One. So that is something that we are currently meeting again in this this month to discuss that. Say, what else?
It seemed to me that obviously now that we have sanitarian positions filled, there was a lot of activity in the sanitarian report.
Yes, you could see the numbers are definitely
jumping.
In terms of how many inspections are being conducted, which is nice. You know, they're they're very experienced and it's nice to just know that, you know, we could rely on them to do a lot of the things that we had to do to fill gaps. So you know, licensing was one this month, all of the tobacco and the the salon licenses. So they took care of all that. Didn't have to worry any, you know, calls or payments. And so that was nice.
Yeah, I I saw those numbers seem to jump.
Yep. So those are all up to date in terms of licensing since around that topic. This month, I started the budget for the town. That's due in January for submission. So I've been working on that, just, you know, making changes. You know, getting all of that information prepared for the hearings.
Now Lucy, do you start with with a, oh, I know it has a name, but you start with like last year's budget and then you justify either up or down, or do you start with zero and then have to rebuild each item in?
So what they usually ask for is just a brief narrative of some of your accomplishments over the past year and then some of your goals.
Okay.
You know, and then I usually provide a breakdown of for each line item on our budget, what we asked for the previous year, and then if I'm looking to keep it the same, increase it, decreases, decrease it, and then just an explanation.
Okay. So that takes time to prepare because it's every single line item.
Yeah. And then, you know, you have to do research in terms of, well, what did we spend and, you know, reviewing all of the grants? What do we?
Yep.
Sort of all of these expenses come out of, you know, are the grants going to be extended? So, you know, nothing really, this budget is pretty easy this year because there's nothing that we're really increasing in terms of spending. I I had mentioned in our last meeting, the vaccine, the flu vaccine, we don't plan on purchasing any extra this year. So we'll see what what happens. I did. I did increase it slightly based on a 10% cost increase that we usually see. And I did add some money in there in case we decide to purchase a small amount of COVID vaccine.
Okay.
So there is some, yeah. A lot of the line items have stayed the same just because we still have a lot of grant money that's coming in. And one grant, we found out yesterday, they're actually extending the grant out until March of 2026. It was it was supposed to end February of this year. So
Okay.
Great for us because we still have quite a bit of money in there to use, so we won't lose it.
Good.
Lucy, is that the grant that is has like specific like parameters of where that money could be used for?
Yeah, so all of the grants have specific parameters, but this one in particular is the ELC two funding. And that one we use for staff. We use it for supplies and things like that. We've used it for equipment in the office, freezers, storage equipment, clinic furniture, all types of things like that. So that was the total in the beginning was about $120,000 and we still have about 40 to 50,000 to spend. So yeah, so that it's the way you don't
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's a lot of money to lose. And so I'm glad they're doing that. They they just released that yesterday. So that's good for us.
Great.
Let's see, what else? Immunization grant, all of those reports were due. So those have just been processed. The Workforce Development Grant, that was approved. They were waiting on just, we're gonna start spending the funds on that.
Now, Lucy, you're the one who writes all these RFPs, right?
So the way it works is the state and the CDC puts these out and then it the state gives us the information and you can either choose to apply or not apply. And they have, you know, structured reports that you have to follow. And you just give brief narratives, but it's nothing, you know, extravagant where I have to come up with these pages of
You probably have some of the data that you have to keep anyway or whatever.
Right. And then, you know, every, you know, it's quarterly usually that you have to provide your budget reports and your programmatic reports and just, you know, make sure that you can show how everything's being spent, being spent accordingly accordingly on whatever it is that you asked to use the money on. And then they want to see the outcomes. So for instance, you know, if you're using some of the money to publish outreach material, well, how much did you, you know, where did you publish it? How much did you have? You know, what was the the audience, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
And then, yeah, we talked about the numbers of flu. We had this month, we had 33 cases that we are monitoring in Trumbull.
So that would be, you would get that data only if someone tested positive for somewhere, right?
Right.
So we know that as in COVID or whatever, the numbers are probably significantly higher, right?
Right. So we have a database that we use through the state and all of those communicable diseases are reported to us. And so we go on and just, there's a workflow where you have to see, you know, hepatitis C, flu, if there's any foodborne out, foodborne illnesses, things like that. So we monitor those. And then, you know, depending on what it is, either Sam or the sanitarian might have to do some outreach or communication with citizens about it. So say there's an active TB case, you know, she has to call and monitor that. So it depends.
And they're med, then
Right. Yep. We, let's see, December, we only gave out 15 flu vaccines. So you could see how there's a, you know, big decline. So we're still we're probably gonna, we're still gonna end up returning some, which is fine. Well, like I said, all the other health departments are on the same page, same boat. I don't know if you've gotten a chance, they actually reached out the Connecticut Post. They listened in on our last Board of Health meeting and she took an interest in that topic. So she did a write-up. I could share it with you when I get off. I can email it to you, but there was an article all about the decline in the flu vaccine this year.
In the Connecticut Post, right? I I read that.
So yes, I thought that was helpful. So, you know, if we start getting questions, you know, it's not just Trumbull, it's not just, you know, this town or that town. It's just and and I tried to explain it best I could for our, you know.
Yeah.
I thought it was well, well done.
Yeah, thank you. So it isn't that they're just going to CBS or somewhere else to get it. People are actually fewer people are getting the flu vaccine? Is that what I'm hearing you say? Is that your experience, Glenn, too, in your office?
I think so. I think a lot of people just are so fed up with vaccines.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even with COVID-19 vaccines, I think the new ones are challenging to get people to get.
Yeah. So the the wow.
Yeah. So I guess that
You you would, I I totally get it. I mean, it's it's like initiative fatigue or vaccine fatigue, they're just tired, but you would think we would have learned how important vaccines are, you know, I mean
Not a very high risk, I think you're a much better chance of getting to get the vaccine. The people that are for moderate risk, a lot of them are declining it.
Okay, interesting, interesting.
I think a big part of it, too, is people are always under the impression that if I get the vaccine, I'm not gonna catch COVID. We're not gonna get the flu, and that's not the case. And so a lot of individuals who are in that, you know, that younger age group have had it several times. And so, you know.
And they don't get that your case just may have been a lesser case than it would have been, particularly the flu. I mean, we know that. Yeah. And I, I mean, I hear people say that all the time. Well, the one time I got the flu is when I had the vaccine and it's and that's just so silly.
It's it's good that we're getting this money. You know, at first we were all thinking, wow, what are we gonna do with all of this grant money to use on media, a media campaign for immunization? But now with everything going on, it couldn't come at a better time because we're saying that it's time to re-educate everyone again, you know what I mean? So, you know, we're looking at the companies we're looking at using, we're not sure how, what we're gonna do yet, but that was one of the major things we wanted to get across to them is our messaging and, you know, our and and then getting information back. Well, how effective was this, you know, not just, well, let's give you your money and you know, put some messaging out because we don't know, did it really do anything, you know?
Yeah. But I think I think you have a very good point that the importance of vaccines is obviously a huge topic for a media campaign. Yeah, yeah.
We still had line. We had three line, three chicks come back positive for line.
Yeah.
We had the Matter of Balance class ended. There were four graduates in that class. And we have, let's see, one, two, three, we had five walk-in flu clinics. But like I said, we only had 15 vaccinated. So that wasn't, you know, big of a turnout as we anticipated. Sam and Sue have coordinated a blood drive. That is scheduled February 2nd. That's gonna be held at the Senior Center in conjunction with the American Red Cross. So that information is gonna be going out. You know, so if you're interested, that is something I can, it'll be on the town website and our Facebook page, but I can send that over to you as well.
Now, is is there an age limit? At what age you can no longer donate?
That I do not know.
Okay, somehow I'm vaguely thinking that, but I could be wrong.
And then they also coordinated something called a proactive healthcare pulse for pulse at the Senior Center. That is also on February 2nd. It's a non-invasive circulation test. And that will, clinicians will be on site to both to participate in that event. So those two, I can send you that out along with the article.
Great.
And then, I don't know if you're interested.
See a meeting with Silver Hills. Is that Silver Hills, the psychiatric facility in West Porter somewhere?
Where's that?
Under outreach, under it's well in here, one like page, maybe page five or so, you have the walk-in clinic schedule and then it says outreach. 12:05 Regional Communications Subcommittee, 12:06 Meeting with Silver Hills.
Oh, that's one of the meetings that she attended.
Okay. And is that Silver Hills, the psychiatric facility?
That I'm not sure. It might be because they do a lot of mental health outreach and education partner with them. So, you know, so it could be, I'm not really sure.
Maybe maybe she could let us know next time what that's about.
Yeah, I'll ask her.
Okay, thank you.
She participated in, Sue participated in the the toy drive that was on December 2nd on Long Hill Firehouse.
Yep, I saw that.
That, hey.
There were a lot of children at your health fair, 400.
That was at the Hill, the Hill Press Middle School. Taylor was there. She helped. I think she liked it. So we had a ton of stuff. We just gave away a lot of outreach goodies and materials. You know, the kids love anything free, right?
Yeah.
What else did we take? They also participated in a senior wellness Christmas event that was on December 19th. That was Sam and Sue. They, you know, they did giveaways, did some education with the seniors. In terms of flu, Sam did me, did a little chart. She gave me a breakdown of the types of flus, the flu and the ages. So the majority of cases so far have been the type A. And the majority of cases have been among the 18 to 49-year-old age group. At least, and and that's for Trumbull.
Now, is that because, do we know whether they got a flu vaccine or didn't? Is that part of the info?
No, they don't give you that. It's just, we just get the positive cases, so.
Okay. Now, that would be interesting, right?
We can, we theoretically could go through all of the information and break it out, but, you know.
That that's a lot of work just for a hypothesis, but that might be the group that tends to be the, that tends to be the age group that does less health prevention, health promotion type things for themselves. You know, I'm from my previous world. That's the group that tends to, a little bit maybe 18 to 35, tends to not keep appointments for well visits. They tend to, it's a group that so that might be that they are the ones that decided they didn't need a vaccine. But, you know, obviously, that's just a hypothesis.
And then, you know, just the usual, we were talking previously about the inspections. You could see all the numbers, you know, quite a few food inspections. We had 21, 10 complaints. Complaints could be anything from, you know, employee not washing their hands properly at a restaurant to we had some issues at the mall with that animal, the Seaquest facility, they
That's chronic, isn't it?
Well, they're closed now.
Yeah.
But when they close, they left things in a, you know, disarray and didn't bother to clean. So it didn't smell too nice in there. So that's all taken care of anyhow, but.
Wow. Yeah, I knew they had closed, but I know you'd had chronic complaints for
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Month. Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, that's why they close, I guess.
Yeah, I would imagine that or just, you know, the mall in general, just the businesses down, a lot of stores are closing and
Well, they also said that they were mistreating the animals, too. I read that. So not, you know, not taking care of them properly or whatever. So Peta or whoever that group is came in and
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't really have much of anything else unless you have a question.
Well, I I have a question when we get to new business, so I won't put it here. So any other questions for Lucy about the Health Department Activity Report?
Well, I have a question, Lucy, about in a restaurant, if a person is in charge of taking the money and then they go and prepare food and they don't have gloves on in between, is this addressed at all? Because I've seen this.
Yeah, I mean, it's some very common mistake that they do, that they make, but they're supposed to be washing their hands. The best thing to do would be to have someone who's handling money and that's exclusively what they do. But, you know, obviously, you know, every every place is short-staffed right now, but they need to be washing their hands in between those two tasks.
So when somebody goes in to do an observation, that they tell them if they see this?
Yeah, they'll cite them for that.
Oh, okay. That's what I was wondering. Do they get cited for that?
Yeah, that's one of the things that they get cited for. But as you know, you know, you can't have eyes everywhere all the time. So
Oh, I know.
Handwashing and glove use is so misunderstood.
Yeah, agreed.
You know, Allison and Karen, you both work in the health system. And I was the chair of the handwashing committee at Yale for 100 years. Well, no, I was only there nine and a half, so it was probably about nine years. And trying to help people understand that if you're wearing gloves and you touch something, your hands aren't sterile because you're wearing gloves. It's just they, it's I can't tell you how difficult a concept that is. And, you know, when we go and get, there's a sandwich store, I won't say the name. And they're trying very hard, you know, it's stop and shop, and they're trying very hard. They do put gloves on and they make the food, but then they turn around to put it in the oven to warm it up. Well, now you've touched something, so your hands are, your gloves are dirty. And, you know, they do take them off before they do the money, but I've just kind of stopped trying, I don't know. It it's such a concept for people to understand. Once your hands and those gloves touch something, they're dirty. And and it's 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 just a tough concept for people to get. And how you would even do it, they'd have to take off, put on a new pair of gloves. If they touch the oven door and put something that you gotta then you're gonna touch the food, you gotta change your gloves again, but it's
And wash your hands. That's
Or wash your hands and wash your hands.
Do that. So they'll take the gloves off and then put on or do something, put the gloves on and think their hands are clean. So it's almost better to, you know, gloves are, they make everyone feel safer and but they're not necessarily, if you don't use them the right way, then they could be worse, you know?
Correct, correct. Gloves are for you, not for, you know, and it's a really tough one. And I don't know how you get around it because
Well, that's why I was wondering, you know, when when our sanitarians go in, do they give them these instructions on the proper, you know? Like if they see, observe them doing the wrong thing, either by not washing their hands between whatever they're doing or the gloves or whatever. Is it up to them to to tell them?
Yeah, I'm sure they try. I mean, even when, I mean, my kids were in band and we used the, you know, the hype, the band used to do food at the art festival or at the classic and whatnot. And we always made sure that different people were doing, people who were doing the money were nowhere near the food and people even who were picking up the cans out of the cold water, you know, the ice to give people the the drink, they weren't touching the food. It was, we really tried hard to make sure people were following those specifics. But yeah, I, you know, Deb, if you you know, I I hate to be a crank, but when I see it somewhere, I tell them. I mean, if I'm in the store, I say, you know, your your hands are not dirty after touching the oven. I don't know. It's it's a toughie. It really is. Okay, any other questions for Lucy on the Health Department Activity Report? Is there any old business that anyone would like to bring up or has questions regarding anything? Okay, I'm adding new business in and I'm going to ask a question. Has there been any, have you worked at all with any of the parish nurse programs in the town? I'm sort of working on being a sort of working on being a, I'm a parish nurse with my church in Trumbull. And uh, we had a meeting last night of across the state of parish nurse programs, and some of them said they had been working with their health departments in terms of, um maybe using the health department as a resource to educate, you know, some of their parishioners or to come in and talk about um different items, and I wondered if you had had any requests from any parish nurse programs in the town.
Not that I know of, no.
Okay, all right. It might be might be something you and I could talk about, um, that maybe it might be a location, some parishes might be a location for some outreach or some education. Um, the theory of parish nursing is that people go to their faith-based institution, they trust nurses and they trust their synagogue or their church or their uh where they practice their faith and that there might be opportunities. Um, years ago, when the program started, they were very strong in terms of doing blood pressure screenings and health fairs and um, other programs. Um, as I understand it, because I'm just kind of getting back into it, COVID sort of squashed a lot of the parish nurse activities. Um, but it's, it's a, it's sort of a community health, but it's not like, you know, a um, a nurse who's going into the home and doing community health like a paid changing uh bandages and whatnot. It's more of education-based and um, help advocate advocacy, helping people connect to services. Um, so I just thought maybe you might have had some requests, but it might be something that we can link um in terms of the health educators, it might, or and outreach, it might be a thought we can you know.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we have our, we only have a part-time health educator.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, a lot of that is all done through the senior center.
Okay.
Um, you know, the, the social worker there and, you know, they reach out to those groups, but um and, you know, everything is advertised, I don't know how we could organize programs to send the nurse to these places, you know what I mean? Um.
Yeah, it would, it would be more of, more of um that the the parish nurse would be responsible in that parish for coordinating whatever needs to be done, but maybe the help, maybe for an example, you're trying to do outreach um on vaccine.
Mm-hmm.
So churches, synagogues, faith-based institutions might be a place for you to outreach to. It it's, it's that kind of a thing, but you and I can kind of talk about it, but I had wondered if you had had any requests or in the past, if there had been any um coordination with with um any parish.
Yeah, during COVID, we did some, you know, um, we, we had interaction with the churches.
Yeah.
Um, more often because, you know, they would ask for advice and we have masks and this and that, and it's just education, but.
Yeah, yeah.
In terms of, you know, blood pressure screenings and things like that, you know, every time we offer these things, we don't really get much interest.
Well, that actually was one of the things that across the state, most of the parish nurse programs were saying that people aren't as interested in blood pressure screenings as they used to be ten years ago because people are going to their primary care provider and getting their blood pressures checked and um, they have other resources, so it's not something that necessarily is uh that important anymore. Some of the other topics people were saying is they were interested in like suicide prevention and um Narcan training and um end-of-life issues. Um.
So suicide, we already do that, and we do, we just had the Narcan training.
But this would be like the congregation, the people of the congregation were interested in it uh being trained in Narcan if they had um.
We don't do the Narcan training. That's done, T-Pod does that. Um, and, you know, like, you know, EMS would do that, not the health department.
Yeah, yeah. Those are just kind of examples of things that congregation tended to be interested in.
I mean, if if there's particular churches that are, uh, you know, interested, you know, they can certainly um reach out and let us know. Um, it's just, the problem is there's never a turnout, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. No, I totally, I just was kind of trying to figure out if there had been any commu, you know, relationships already, if there had been any relationships already. All right, are there any other questions, thoughts, discussion that we have for um Lucy or anyone that we need to bring forward? I hope everyone had a nice holiday season. Um, let's make this one a, a nice, happy and healthy twenty twenty-four, all healthy in twenty twenty-four.
Yep.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn?
Glenn, and we need a second.
A second.
Thank you, Karen, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So we are adjourned. And Allison, you're the only one who didn't hear. My son had his scan yesterday and he is one year cancer-free.
Oh, that's great news.
Yeah, so we're excited about that. Yeah, one year cancer-free. All righty, thank you again to everybody.
Thank you.
And board members, you're all a peach. And we're lucky to have all of you, so take care and we will now we will zoom next.
Zoom, yeah.
We will see you via Zoom next month.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks, Nan, a good one.
You too.